Roll call planning. Planning Commission members first, Joey Edwards.
Here.
Steve Stevens. Dave Clark-Berle. Jason Rufo, was he also not able to make it?
Jason was not able to make it tonight.
Ryan Hill. Nice to meet you. And David.
Derek.
Yes.
County Commissioners, I know Commissioner Tharp is not going to make it, Commissioner Lee.
Here.
And Commissioner Book.
Here.
Changes or additions to the agenda? Okay, we had minutes to approve from March 10th. I was not at, unable to attend that one, but I know there was a change sent out earlier. Did everybody have a chance to review the updated version and anybody have a motion for proofless?
Edwards moves to approve the March 10th minutes. Second.
Okay. All in favor? Updates from staff.
I think some of the things that we'd like to share with you is that our next One Community Engagement is coming up. It's going to be, it's a Storytime contest of the stories that move us as a community. They can be written, stories, photographs, audio recordings. Pretty excited about this, but this idea of what's kind of brought our residents to our community or what makes it special for them. And so we're asking that those submissions be submitted by April 17?
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth. April 18th and then the event itself is going to be at Fright on April 25th. So we will be getting you more information out about that, but really excited. We're at this first phase of our engagement on the One Community Project at about 75% of our goal. So we just keep creeping up on it. We're continuing to have a lot of small group conversations. We've been, most of us up at CMC with staff. Rachel was at City on Hennel and stopped about 30 people in the morning while they were getting their coffee. We've been at the Mobile Morning Spinner with kids in the community. And so our outreach in the community just continues to grow. Really excited about that. Part of that effort will be that we're going to be asking to find a time for the city and the county Planning Commissions to have a joint meeting, what we were kind of thinking and to give you kind of a heads up. Now is that perhaps we invite the city Planning Commission to join you for one of your regular meetings. And then we love to join them for one of their regular meetings, keeping in mind, of course, that their meeting times are a little different than ours and I think that they believe they begin at 6:00 in the evenings. So, but we thought that maybe we could alternate and do something like that. For the board, we are also looking to do this thing with the council and the Board of County Commissioners. And this is just a preparatory step to start us talking about the con plan. And so we just kind of want to, since we made the commitment to do this as a city and county comprehensive plan for the first time, we just are looking, we're going to be reaching out to find times to bring the groups together and start the conversation and start, we're going to, before too terribly long, we're going to start into the more technical aspect of the comprehensive plan. Pretty exciting. The next meeting, our regular meeting in April, the first, we're going to just have some backcountry zoning review questions. Looking to, as we administer this new, this code. We've had three backcountry structures successfully built in the backcountry, but it is kind of a time that there are some questions have brought up about some of the standards. And so one of the things that we'd like to do on an agenda for the first meeting in April is just kind of look at those standards and make sure that they resonate and that there's an agreement on the administration as we look to continue to consider applications within the backcountry. Then the second meeting in April will be another public hearing for Titan Gold. And isn't that correct?
It's the 28th.
The 28th, so the second regular meeting in April will be Titan Gold and the gravel mining operation. To give you a heads up on that. And then I'll let Melissa and Cece share any other updates that they might have for staff or for of staff.
Well, we also, in terms of One Community, are going to be at schools. You have kids at the schools for teacher conferences, you might see us near the door. So we're going to, some version of us are going to be there Wednesday and Thursday. There's also the joint work session with the city council tomorrow night. And it's open to the community in terms of talking about lifetime and some potential changes there. So that, that is also going on. So those are the ones that came through.
And that starts tomorrow at 6:00.
At CMC about it, CPD. Correct.
At CMC.
Is there, does anybody know if there's like a contingency plan? I just don't know how everybody's supposed to set up a little room.
That's a really good point and we'll probably bring that to everybody.
Just think about our hearing and I'm like, I mean, we could barely open that room.
That's, that's probably a really good logistical question to pose to the organizers. And so we'll probably think about that.
We can pass that on to Lauren.
Yeah. Lauren and Lori are kind of overseeing kind of the logistics. And so we might mention that we might have overflow. Will be presenting, CPD will be presenting just on the permitting side of, you know, the event and just some feedback from different, all of the internal review agencies. And there'll be a time for public input as well. And Cece?
Uh, let's see. I think we've issued a couple more short-term rental licenses in the past few weeks, but it's still over 10 available. So that's been good, working on compliance and getting the folks who are listening that a license into compliance. Don's been really helpful with that. And just for the record, David Clark-Berle entered Zoom. Joined Zoom.
And just a couple of staff updates. We do have a new GIS tech analyst, Shelby Sightzinger. I hope I'm pronouncing her last name correct. But really excited to have recruited someone graduating from CMC with a certificate in GIS. And she, she worked on the backcountry, I guess it was just called the project.
Something like that.
But it, but really it was, it was a great piece of work and no pun intended in any of that. But we're really excited. So to have that position staffed and to have that partnership and collaboration with Colorado Mountain College. So really excited about that. We have posted, or we will very quickly be posting, our environmental health specialist position for OWTS Oversight and Administration. And so if you know anyone who has a certi- certificate in environmental health specific to OWTS, please pass that information along. We are going to be aggressively recruiting to find someone to fill that position. Currently, we are, our building department staff and our code enforcement staff are providing capacity for the clerical side of that. We're relying on our third-party reviews by SEH, our engineering firm. And, but we are hoping to quickly get that position back in place before we get the bulk of the applications for this season. So if you know anyone, please pass the word. And I think that concludes, I think, everything we have as updates.
And can you, what department were the GIS tech moving? Is that your department?
Our department. Yep. Mapping is, is part of community planning.
The assessors.
No. There's a, the assessors department, Mark Wesworth, and I, he was a part of the selection committee. And a lot of the duties and projects that are upcoming are going to be shared with the assessors office better. So there'll be a lot of close, as it always has been, there's always been a lot of close connection between the assessor's office and the GIS position. Great question.
Great. Move us down to new business. We got a full plate, so we'll get after it. File 25-02 is the Timber Ranch Rezone. And we had done the sketch previously, but he misses for the rezone partial portion, correct?
Correct. So a lot of times we do these all within the same hearing that will do the, so at preliminary, when we're doing the PUD. Generally, we do the rezone application at the same time, just for affected, kind of efficiencies. But there were just a few items missing at the time and the application came in afterwards. So we're just doing it now so that we've got everything done through the kind of the preliminary review and this project can move into final plat. So as you all know.
I'll do opening statement real quick. Oh, no, no, that's okay. I just wanted to, that was a great intro. The Lake County Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners will now conduct a joint public hearing. This statement I am reading shall be incorporated into and made part of the record on these proceedings. The Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners have jurisdiction to conduct a joint public hearing on a rezoning under Section 3.13 of the Lake County Land Development Code. The purpose of this hearing is to consider whether the proposed amendment should be approved. In considering that matter, the commission will address the approval criteria set forth in Section 3.13.3 of the Lake County Land Development Code. The procedure to be followed in this hearing will be, one, members of the commission and or board will disclose if they've had any ex parte communications. Two, the county staff will make initial presentation. Three, the applicant may then make their presentation. Four, after that, any persons either supporting or opposing the application may present evidence. Five, supporting and opposing witnesses may be questioned by the commission and the board. Once questioning is concluded, no further questioning is permitted unless granted by the chair. And six, the applicant may then present any rebuttal evidence. The parties and witnesses are asked not to submit redundant, irrelevant, or cumulative evidence. If someone has already made the point that you wish to say, please simply say so. The chair will also require that all comments be made to the Planning Commission and the board and that there's no dialogue between the applicant and members of the audience. At the conclusion of the evidentiary portion of the hearing, the chair will entertain a motion to close the evidentiary portion of the hearing and the commission will discuss and weigh the evidence. Then there will be a motion to close the discussion phase of the joint public hearing. The Board of County Commissioners will then lead the meeting and the Chair of the Planning Commission will entertain a motion on the application. The motion may take the form of one of the following recommendations. One, approve the application with no conditions. Two, approve the application with recommended conditions. Three, approve the application with newly identified conditions. Or four, deny the application. The planning director shall make record of any substantial discussion on the motion and include that in the record with the recommendation of the commission. The commission's recommendation will be in the form of a statement of motion. Are there any objections to the jurisdiction of the commission or to the form or substance of these proceedings? Hearing none, I will ask each Planning Commission member and then each county commissioner if you've had any ex parte communications to disclose and if so, to please disclose them now. I just want to say that aside from the fact that this was sort of touched on in the previous meeting regarding the sketch. Joey Edwards.
None.
Dave Clark-Berle.
None.
Ryan Hill. David Derek.
None.
Heather Lynn, none. Commissioner Lee.
None.
Commissioner Book. Staff, me, proceed.
Awesome. Thank you so much. And so this is just to really kind of highlight for you where the PUD zoning is relevant to. So as you may recall, this is a, first, a major subdivision and then a PUD applied to this section of the division of land and then you go to the next slide. So Sheet 1 and Sheet 2 are the re-subdivision of Track B, known as, which will become the Planned Unit Development. And so that's the area by which we're applying this new zoning through this request for consideration. And you can actually go to the next slide and see. This is just kind of, wanted to give you the highlights of what is different about this zoning. This is the dimensional standards. There are two planning areas. Planning, planning area one is all of the residential use, which is the single-family homes and the duplexes. And planning area two is the regional parks and community, or the regional trail and community parks. So minimum, maximum allowable lot coverage is at 67% for residential. The minimum lot size in the residential is 3,775 square feet. Previously, the zoning would have been 7,500 square feet, minimum lot size. So that is one of the areas that you're going to see a difference between what was previously the urban residential zoning and now this proposed zoning through the PUD. The lot width minimum is 35, again in the residential. And then you can see the site setbacks. There's been a slight reduction in those as well. The front end now would be 10 feet. Under urban residential, it would have been 20. Sides are at seven and a half feet. That's a reduction from the 10. The north side rear, there are some different variances between northwest and south side rear setbacks. And then setbacks from County Road 4 is an additional 50 feet. The maximum building height looks exactly the same as urban residential. That's 35 feet. And, but however, accessory structures are not allowed to exceed 20 feet in height. The maximum density has increased to six dwelling units per acre, largely based upon that lot size. The minimum dwelling square footage for a primary structure, again, the residential use is 1,000. Our zoning code for urban residential would have been 600. So it increased the minimum building size of the primary use and while decreasing a little bit of the lot size and increasing that density. So that's basically some of the dimensional standards that were considered through this new zoning. The use by right development, the things that can be built within this subdivision as a use by right, which require no additional land use review, or single-family homes, duplexes, community parks, regional trails, home occupations, and home-based daycares. Home-based daycare and home occupations already exist in our code and are subject to specific standards. Home occupations were to be able to support, obviously, occupations that can be based out of the household that don't deteriorate, deter from the residential nature of the neighborhood. And then, of course, in our time that we're struggling to find enough childcare, we were happy to see kind of a promotion of a use by right in home-based daycare. In addition, the, through the PUD incentive program that is within the code, they have dedicated 10 units to local workforce, earning up to 140% AMI through a date restriction. That'll be overseen through, we put some flexibility, the Regional Housing Authority or the Lake County Housing Department, depending on who has the availability and ability to oversee that for the development. There were some additional criteria that they've added around design guidelines, which they refer to as a mountain modern or cabin architectural style. Further suggested that feature a combination of different siding designs and materials, including but not limited to lapboard and bat stone, standing seam, and corrugated metal. Paint colors and stains will be muted and sourced from a consistent palette that complements the natural surroundings. Bright paint colors will not be allowed. All building materials utilized will be aesthetically pleasing and will not detract from the surrounding neighborhoods. So that was some additional requirements that you will see within this particular zoning control document for Timber Ranch. Also, it stipulates within the zoning control document, the regional trail is intended to be dedicated to Lake County for public use, while all other open space parks and sidewalks will be maintained by the HOA. Can go ahead and go to the next slide. So the approval criteria for a rezon is kind of an either/or. So a rezone can, application can be approved if A, if the proposed rezoning is found by the Planning Commission or Board of County Commissioners respectfully to be consistent with the Lake County Comprehensive Plan. And within the staff report, we suggest compliance with the Lake County Comprehensive Plan based on the following goals that have been outlined within the, within the plan. Goal 2.1 states, provide core infrastructure to serve existing residents and businesses and to facilitate growth and expansion, transportation, water, sanitation, communications, and building sites. Goal number 2.14 is to promote the development of diversity of housing types, providing for residents with different economic and housing needs, giving Lake County employees the opportunity to live and affordably close to where they work. Goal 3.13, develop a bike and pedestrian pathway system connecting Lake County Leadville and Twin Lakes to recreational amenities and heritage sites in the county and to the adjacent communities. And goal 3.17, establish intergovernmental land use and infrastructure planning expectations for future growth within the city of Leadville peripheral area. And so, of course, this has kind of been where the con plan suggests that we would want to see this higher density. And so this plan coming in and asking for that does align with our con plan. Development of the regional trail and kind of exciting to share that Prose has received a grant, I think in the amount of $45,000 for the expansion of access to the Leadville Junction. And this area could be considered into part of that planning and all of the other goals. The other finding for a rezon could be if it wasn't found to be consistent with the con plan and it was actually found to be inconsistent. The other findings that would have to be made is that there was an air in establishing the current zoning or its application to a specific lot. So if there was originally an air in the way that the zoning was applied or that the proposed rezon bears a reasonable relationship to the welfare of the community and that there's been a change in the conditions of the neighborhood that's, of course, requested recently. We don't, staff doesn't believe that we have to go to those alternative findings because we can find compliance with our comprehensive plan. And so we are recommending approval of the rezoning application, really also based on satisfactorily reviewing so many of these conditions and this proposal through the preliminary PUD application. Staff has provided some edits to the zoning control document that this is based on. So when the final plat is recorded, we will record what's what we refer to as the zoning control document, which is the zoning for this particular area that will be called upon whenever development applications come in. There may be a few just clerical kind of revisions that need to be made within that document. Everything that we submitted to the applicant, they accepted without any comment. They were fine with. But there are just a couple remaining clerical items. So we do propose a condition of approval that would say CPD shall work with the developer applicant to correct any minor edits to the zoning control document prior to recording the final plat. And then, of course, as standard, all representations made in the application and in the area will be considered for conditions of approval. So we've furnished two suggested motions, both an approval and a denial. And we're happy to answer any questions that you might have relative to the rezon.
County Commissioners or Planning Commission, anybody have any questions? I think I saw Nick on there. Does the applicant have any thing they want to add?
Hey, guys. Good afternoon.
Hi, Nick. Yep, we hear you.
Yeah, no, nothing, nothing to add. Ann did a fantastic job. She hit all the points, but I want to make myself available for any questions.
Great. Go ahead, DCB.
Yeah, I was just wondering if the 140% of AMI is like a DOLA standard or how that number gets established for the 10 portable units.
That's a, that's a good question. And Jackie Wellahan is, is still educating me on, on all those, all those guidelines. But, but essentially, the 140% was sort of derived from a recommendation that we got when we look at our numbers and our ability to construct this housing and our costs. That, that was sort of the most tenable number we could work with and still keep our, our project viable. Any lower than that, we'd be looking at the need to, to get additional funding from other places because the loss would be just too large to bear.
And Nick, you had put in, you may already remember in your preliminary PUD application, you did kind of highlight what that cost is to the overall development to, for those restricted units, that you were able to actually put a monetary amount of consideration into that.
You mean in terms of the sales price?
Into the amount of kind of almost subsidy. You know, I was thinking that it was around a $2 million cost to offer these within the, yes.
So we, we did a calculation based on 140% AMI with three bedrooms. That, that gives you on the, the big spreadsheet, four and a half, four and a half persons living in that household. So we calculated that, that, that house would be sold for $400,000. And that's about $200,000 below market, considerably speaking. So that's where we got 200,000 times, times 10 units, $2 million concession.
Thank you. That's helpful. Appreciate it.
Thanks, David.
Any other questions?
Yeah. Am I correct in remembering the last time we discussed this, that the traffic plan, traffic study, said there would be no improvements needed to Evergreen?
As far as turn lanes, then yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing for this file-25-02. Oh, sorry. Thank you. Are there any members of the public who are either on Zoom or in person that have any comments or questions on this application? Okay. Now I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Edwards moves to close the public hearing. Second.
Okay. All in favor of closing the public hearing? Aye.
Aye.
I would propose that we continue through our files here and with the commissioners in the room. And we do our deliberations at the end of all three files.
Sounds great.
Okay. So that tables the discussion and motion portion of this one until later, further in the meeting. Okay, we have filed, filed 25-03, which is the Garvey Scenic Conservation Overlay Site Plan Review. And I'm going to open this one up also. Sorry, it's going to sound very similar. We're going to do this three times tonight. The Lake County Planning Commission will now conduct a public hearing. This statement I'm reading shall be incorporated into and made part of the record on these proceedings. The Planning Commission has jurisdiction to conduct a joint public hearing on a site plan review under Section 3.15 of the Lake County Land Development Code. The purpose of this hearing is to consider whether the proposed amendment should be, should it be approved. In considering that matter, the commission will address the approval criteria set forth in Section 3.15.3E of the Lake County Land Development Code. The procedure to be followed in this hearing will be, one, members of the commission will disclose any ex parte communications. Two, county staff will make initial presentations. Three, applicant may then make their presentation. Four, after that, any other persons either supporting or opposing the application may present evidence. Five, supporting and opposing witnesses may be questioned by the commission. Once questioning is concluded, no further questioning is permitted unless granted by the chair. And six, the applicant may then present any rebuttal evidence. The parties and witnesses are asked not to submit redundant, irrelevant, or cumulative evidence. If someone has already made the point you wish to make, please simply say so. The chair will also require that all comments be made to the Planning Commission and that there be no dialogue between the applicant and members of the audience. At the conclusion of the evidentiary portion of the hearing, the chair will entertain a motion to close the evidentiary portion of the hearing and the commission will discuss and weigh the evidence. Then there will be a motion to disclose the discussion phase of the joint public hearing. The Chair of the Planning Commission will entertain a motion on the application. The motion may take form of one of the following recommendations. Approve the condition, or, sorry. Approve the application with no conditions. Approve the application with recommended conditions. Approve the application with newly identified conditions or deny the application. The planning director shall make record of any substantial discussion on the motion and include that in the record with the decision of the commission. Are there any objections to the jurisdiction of the commission or to the form or substance of these proceedings? Hearing none, I Hearing none, I will now ask each Planning Commission member if you've had any ex parte communications to disclose, and if so, to please disclose them now. In this, I probably should have switched the order off because Commissioners, you can just sit in on this, I guess, and let us know your thoughts. But Joey Edwards? Dave Clark-Berle?
None.
Ryan Hill? David Ger? Heather Lynn, none? And staff may proceed.
Thank you, Ceci. This is the Garvey Site Plan. It's in our scenic overlay district. So that's part of why we're reviewing it the way that we are. This is a property owned by David Garvey. It's four acres in size and it's own recreational. And the request is for a ground mounted solar installation. So that you might remember, a couple of years ago, they came in, same process, minus the solar for the house. And that's what you see here before you in the two pictures. You've probably driven by it by now. So the property is essentially in southern Lake County. Can you go forward? So a site plan is required because it's in our scenic conservation overlay district. And you can see that there are three solar panels that are proposed. They're each 17 by 15 approximately in size. And the picture on there is what they will look like, a typical photo. And so, they are each 14 feet tall. So they're not too tall. And they are about 120 feet north of the existing house. And that site plan kind of shows us the layout and the quantity and kind of what, at scale, what we'll see on the ground. An important part is they are a black color. And we'll talk about that a little more when we go to the next slide. So there's really three sections of the code that apply to this, which is, you know, it's a small request, but we've thought about it in three different ways. But essentially, I think the important criteria is always a comprehensive plan. This area is rural and remote. And so, we really consider large lots, single family low density, which is what got built here. And it also fits, we believe, because of the energy self-sufficiency. Utilities are scarce out here, and so solar is one of the solutions for an environment like this. The probably most important thing we're looking at is screening from view. And in this case, as you saw in the pictures, it's on a hillside with just sage brushing and, you know, the existing topography. So in really looking at it and thinking about it, just leaving them alone, you know, 14 feet tall, fairly slight when they're horizontal in elevation, and a dark color, it's probably the best screening that we're going to have, in our opinion. So any, we thought about vegetation or tucking it behind the building or any burming. And all of those things either get in the way of the solar itself or really will just bring more attention to that hillside. So it's our recommendation that this is the best solution under the circumstances. There's a couple of criteria related to how big they can be. It's smaller than 25 feet tall. And it's only producing 100% of what the home needs and not the 120% maximum. So it fits well within the kind of the size requirements we're looking for. So the next slide. And so, it's pretty straightforward. We, and I don't know if this is an error, but there are no suggested conditions of approval unless we need the one that's sort of the catch-all. If there's anything that's stated at the hearing, you know, we could consider that. But otherwise, it really needs what it needs to. It's the size and color and so on, in our opinion. So based upon that, we are recommending this. From the staff report, there are, we have a suggested motion for approval and one for denial with findings that you'll need to determine in making a motion.
Thank you. Is the applicant on?
I am.
Hi. Do you have anything you'd like to add or share?
The previous speaker, Melissa, thank you for preparing the presentation. It's very well done. Covers the points I wanted the commission to consider. And any questions? Fire away.
Thank you. With that, does Planning Commission have any questions for the applicant or staff on this one? Dave, go ahead.
Yeah, I may, I kind of lost audio for a second, so Melissa may have touched on this, but just interested in the ground mount systems versus putting them on that west roof pitch. The why behind that.
The why behind that on the roof, and I believe my floor contractor is on the call, so they can support this is we, number one, the building isn't engineered to carry them. And number two, we wouldn't get the maximum exposure we will get by placing them on the hill with the orientation that we'll place them at. So we would have needed more panels and we would have had to re-engineer the building to carry them.
Yeah, I was just mostly interested, but yeah, thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from members of the public or County Commissioners? Anybody?
The entire structure is going to be black. Is there any like situation where like painting the poles, the support poles themselves, the color of the dirt and the grass around it does reduce the visibility or is that?
An option?
Yeah.
We certainly could, is the panels themselves are black, which is consistent with the roof color of the building. And we could certainly paint the concrete pedestals that will support the poles for the panels to be as less intrusive as possible.
And that's not even like, you know, I'm just making suggestions because I'm pretty new at a lot of this. So just, these are just kind of thoughts that occur to me as we're talking about this stuff. So thanks for listening.
Well, I've driven by that structure. I don't know if you would see, or maybe it's because I'm getting old, but I don't know if you would see the poles from the road, from the highway? I mean, I know you'll see the actual panels, you know, but can't really. I feel like the way that that site plan shows, it's actually a pretty, I mean, I would love to encourage solar as much as possible, but understand that sometimes in smaller, more dense areas, it can be a little bit more offensive. But where that particular property is and how that's situated, I think, looks pretty nice.
How far off the road is, could we look at the map again to see where?
Yeah, 1,000 feet.
Yeah, you're quite a ways back.
I'm thinking it's in the wrong spot. Can we go back one more or two? Yeah.
Yeah, so you go on Highway 24 and it's on the other side of the river. And it's kind of sits on the side of the hillside.
Somewhere halfway up the hillside.
Yeah.
Below the block.
I know. I think I'm thinking this is in a different spot than it is. I'm thinking like right across the street from 82 almost.
No, this is farther up. This is halfway between.
Okay.
It's not the 80 minutes.
Yeah.
And compared to the build, it's pretty small.
Is this near where the airplanes are up there on the hill?
Before that.
Before that?
It's before that.
It's way, it's way up.
And the build, and the building structure, you know, is, you can see the building structure. And that was kind of approved just because it was all kind of a dark, one color thing. So the solar panels will be very miniscule compared to.
And it's interesting, you can see the building, but the earthwork is more visible.
Yeah.
So having the solar panels be dark, like the building, probably, as Heather said, helps visibly hide it for whatever reason. It's interesting because you see the bare earthwork where they burned for the house more than you actually see the house. Interesting trick of color.
Yeah, same thing with like trying to plant trees in front of it. The more you try and hide it, the more it's going to stick out.
There's not, there's not a tree for several hundred yards.
Right, yeah.
There's not a tree for several miles.
You may think about a windmill.
Yeah. I, yeah, and I feel like the purpose of the scenic conservation or how we've used that overlay for all of these years anyhow is not to like eliminate the fact that we're going to see structures and people aren't going to use the land. It's that it's not allowing potentially another airplane type situation from happening. Or, you know, it's not a purple barn. And it's not a, you know, and I think the idea here was to not super reflective or things like that that's going to be intrusive. You know, I think some of the good examples of that are some of the things that we passed along 24 about like Crystal Lakes and stuff. And it's just like, there's going to be structures and it's not the idea to completely camouflage them, but that they are harmonious with our surroundings. And I feel like he's done a good job with that up there. And to encourage the use of solar without additional impact seems pretty reasonable within what we've tried to do over the years.
Yeah, something to encourage.
Any other thoughts or questions, members of the public, anybody have anything they want to add or?
Air curiosity?
Yeah.
Do they have electrical power to the site from utility?
We do not. We do not.
This is it for Gen 7.
Yeah, this is it. And there will be a Gen 7 backup. Is the Gen 7 and the tank for the Gen 7 will be behind the building, you know, so it won't be visible at all. But I need to have some sort of backup with the, have redundancy.
Yeah, great question. All right, any other questions, comments? All right, and we'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing for the site plan review. Okay, all in favor? Great. I'm going to skip us again. We'll go ahead and open public hearing for file 24-39, which is the sign code amendment. Sign code amendment. Here we go. Are we excited to hear this again? Okay. "The Lake County Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners will now conduct a joint public hearing. The statement I am reading shall be incorporated into and made part of the record on these proceedings. The Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners have jurisdiction to conduct a joint public hearing on the Land Development Code Amendment under Section 3.8 of the Lake County Land Development Code. The purpose of this hearing is to consider whether the proposed amendment should be approved. In considering the matter, the commission will address the approval criteria set forth in Section 3.8.9 of the Lake County Land Development Code. Procedure to be followed in this hearing will be: County staff will make a presentation. After that, any other persons either supporting or opposing the application may present evidence or ask questions. Supporting and opposing witnesses may be questioned by the commission and the board. Once questioning is concluded, no further questioning is permitted unless granted by the chair. The parties and witnesses are asked not to submit redundant, irrelevant, or cumulative evidence." I think we heard that. "At the conclusion of the evidentiary portion of the hearing, the Chair will entertain a motion to close the evidentiary portion of the hearing, and the commission will discuss and weigh the evidence. Then there will be a motion to close the discussion phase of the joint public hearing. The Board of County Commissioners will then leave the meeting, and the Chair of the Planning Commission will entertain a motion on the application. The motion may take the form of one of the following recommendations: Approve the application with no conditions. Approve the application with recommended conditions. Approve the application with newly identified conditions, or deny the application. The Planning Director shall make record of any substantial discussion on the motion and include that in the record with the recommendation of the commission. The commission's recommendation will be in the form of a statement of motion. Are there any objections to the jurisdiction of the commission or to the form or substance of these proceedings? Hearing none, County staff may make its initial presentation."
Great. Well, this code amendment has been a lot of work, I would say.
Thank you.
It has taken a while, and I appreciate your patience and attention to this because I know the code has come out better than it would have had we not spent the time we have deliberating on some of these things. So I'm hopeful that the version that came out today that you're reviewing is acceptable. I will say that I've got, I've received some minor comments and I'll address those in a little bit. But this is a reminder of the public process that we're in. It's been almost a year. Well, that's kind of fortunate, but you know, you had 10 months. And so, we've had actually two moratoriums. They didn't update, they had slide extensions. And three study sessions. So again, it's taken some work to get here, but I think it's been a good process. So going forward, I, we've talked about a lot of these things, so I'm going to touch on them because this is the first time we've talked about it in a public hearing.
Yes.
So we do have a section on signs that don't require a permit. And so, these should be pretty familiar to you. I think they're pretty typical of what we see, like public signs that are kind of required by local and state government. Signs located inside buildings, you know, window signs that are larger than 50%, or no more than 50%. So, you know, and again, and yard signs, just to summarize a little bit of those. We do address yard signs a little later in the code. But all of these are signs that, you know, we probably expect, people expect to be able to put up without a permit. So we can go to the next slide. And prohibited signs, also pretty typical. We've talked about these. But again, the public right of way is a place that people cannot put up signs unless you are the state or the public. So vehicular signs, we've talked about that, with some provision for variance. Roof mounted signs, talked about those. Our home occupations, we do allow those, but no more than four square feet. Signs of more than four square feet are prohibited, so the ones under that size are allowed. I don't know. And I think the important part is they don't make noise, they don't move, they don't have lights that are objectionable, and they don't inhibit. So I think we've accomplished that. And go to the next slide. I think a couple of the areas that we really kind of focused on was making sure that the signs that are abandoned or not maintained can be addressed. And so, this section does address that. We talk about they need to be removed 14 days after some, a business closes or an activity is over that required. And there's some exception for seasonal issues. We all know winter can be, you know, can hang around sometimes. So and then we also have in here the ability for the land use department, our zoning enforcement, to go out and remove a sign if we have to and we can recoup that cost. So I think that touches on abandoned signs. Going forward to maintenance, this is where I talk a little bit more about maintenance. The idea is that our signs, the entire time they're being used, are in good shape, you know? So maintenance and addressing any dilapidation, which we know exists and we've talked about in our community. So yeah, I think this is a pretty strong statement that allows us to address a sign that you, maybe you bring your attention or has brought to our attention. So the next one. I think what's important about this slide is both, we put some of this information in charts, which I think are a little easier to read and understand. What we did is address content neutrality in our signage. So monuments, site sign, wall sign, all of those don't speak to what's on the sign, but they tell us the type of sign, how, what the maximum square footage can be and its height. So I think we've talked about these types of signs a fair amount. And then the next chart, same comment. I left the pole signs struck out on this slide so that you decided to remove pole signs as one of the options, eliminating the 15-foot height. And as pointed out, we do allow a directory sign to be that tall, understanding that, you know, what we're looking at is two or more businesses. So I would imagine, and you may have different thoughts, but I think we left it here because you need that additional height in order to really manage multiple businesses on one side. side. So the next one, this is, we also added graphics. Um this one is not one of the updated ones, but the version that you received is. So uh we think the graphics help explain what we're trying to say in words. Um so we can go to the next slide, this is our monument sign, and just so everybody remembers, we can go to the next slide. Kind of this is generally the size that we're looking at for our monument signage um in terms of square footage and height. So I know we've covered that in some of our study sessions, but part of the record, we're also looking at sort of the type of sign, um and we have language that we want to utilize rustic mountain architecture. So that is a broad statement, but um it's really looking at neutral colors, finishes, and kind of fits in with our vibe, let's just say.
Okay.
Our vibe.
Bye-bye.
All right, next one. This is another sign that was pointed out as a good one. It might be a little over the eight feet, the sign itself, but again, sort of materials, scale, um fitting in with that rustic mountain architectural thing. Next one, we we have talked some about sign illumination, and I did after the last study session add definitions right in here about knits and lumens, and David was helpful for me in like knit, it's and IT in capitals, not knits, but little things like that, the nitty gritty of it all.
I agree with you.
Yeah, so we do define in the the interrelationship between the two terms, so um yeah, we we address electronic message boards, and again, these are gonna fit within the size and the scale of our monument signs and can only but only be half of that um sixty-four square feet. So really kind of limiting those, controlling for illumination and brightness, as well as the ability to to have hours of operation, you know, sort of doing it down when it's appropriate to do so. So I think that. Our um service station signs, we took a fair amount of time on this, I think the big thing was the canopy, and that we allowed two, given it could be on the corner, it often is, but that sign can't exceed the height of the canopy, and also that the sign cannot be lit. But I did add lighting is allowed to illuminate the gas pumps underneath the canopy, so there is lighting under the canopy, just not the canopy itself.
Mm-hmm.
So um and the drive-through, talked about this, um allowing two for drive-through service lane, ten square feet, six feet in height, kind of scale. So again, you know, they can be internally illuminated and but they really need to fit with the architecture of the building, they they can't just sort of stand alone in their color and materials. So I think that's the approval criteria, we're looking at again compliance with the health plan, I think really is much more about protecting our public health, safety, and welfare, which has a lot to do with um the making sure they don't make noise and there's not glare and another distraction to drivers in some way. The other thing that and we really focused on this, I would say, is because there's a major shift in social conditions by using cell phones, so that people know where they're going typically before they get there. And so with that wayfinding option, I think the idea is that we could have smaller signage and not eliminate anybody's, you know, hamper anyone's business activity. So and then reducing visual clutter in the community, which is the whole thing with signage. So I think that's how we really meet the necessary criteria. So based upon that, I did receive comments from David today um that I think fit within the um what we have here for minor modifications, that could be final graphics, formatting, edits, or um any new refinements that might come in. I also received some comments from Peter Day, and I think the the ones that probably apply are are similar in nature. Um I don't believe there's anything there that really is substantive in terms of changes that we would be looking at making to the code. And I received those on Friday, so it wasn't a lot of time to absorb that information. But um based upon the the resolution that we are recommending the proposed sign code with that condition, and we appreciate all your hard work on this.
I appreciate all of your hard work on this.
Yeah, nice.
It's been a huge lift, but it's, I think, like you said, I think through the different conversations, it's a beautiful sign code, much better than we had, so thank you for your efforts.
You were very consistent in walking everything through, thank you.
Bring it back.
Work on moving it forward every single week, thank you.
Any questions from planning commissioners or county commissioners?
I had one question on the maintenance clause, is that would that be addressed through a code enforcement issue, is that how that would be done? Okay, thank you.
Um I did notice one thing that jumped out at me was that which takes precedence, the signs that do not require a permit or signs that could be considered a nuisance? So if somebody's got a giant window, but they put an illuminated animated sign inside the window, which which takes priority over that, the fact that it's a sign that doesn't need a permit or the fact that it's a nuisance sign?
Mm-hmm. Well, I think effectively both, right? So they can have a window sign, but it can't be a sign that would be distracting or, you know, create a nuisance.
Okay, just trying to look ahead and think about loopholes that somebody might find.
Yeah, I think because the sign codes that apply to applicable signs is outlined, but then you have prohibited signs and underprohibited signs is obnoxious signs.
Yeah.
And so I think that that isn't criteria under the signs that have to get application, right? That criteria is like under those are prohibited, so they're not allowed.
Right, no matter where.
Even though you're allowed to have a sign in your window, you're not allowed to ever have a sign that's obnoxious.
Just wanna make sure there's not a loophole there.
Yeah, I don't think, and I think that if I think that if prohibited things was under the general criteria for sign, like a sign application.
Yeah.
If the illuminated piece was just under that, but because it's under prohibited signs, I think it's its own category.
Cool.
Prohibited regardless of location, yes.
Any other questions, any other comments or? Yeah.
I have a public comment. Um I did submit comments on on Friday and I submitted both a, you know, five hot, if I page letter that described, you know, each of four, four things that I thought were significant that I didn't see in the code or has been removed from the previous code and don't appear in the submitted code. And I also provided a, you know, a red line of the document that, you know, that described, you know, the the changes that I discussed in the cover letter and made some suggestions for improvement. And I think I think each of them is significant and, you know, I guess, I I take it that the planning commissioner or the Board of Commissioners hasn't seen these comments?
No.
Okay, well, I guess I'd consider that these are these are evidence, you should really have an opportunity to review them before you make a decision about, you know, forwarding your approval to the to the Board of County Commissioners. I'll just briefly, um, you know, talk about each of them. The first one is um the fifteen foot height on the directory sign, you know, that's gonna be the tallest sign that you're gonna allow in the in the county, and it seems excessively high, especially if you're looking at a at a site with, you know, maybe multiple buildings with, um, you know, with, you know, that need directions, you know, you might be better served to allow, you know, two directory signs, you know, not exceeding eight feet in height or ten feet or whatever, but one sign, you know, only one sign being allowed as a directory sign up to fifteen feet seems like it's gonna, you know, just be the biggest, the biggest thing in town. And so I guess I'd I'd like you to consider, you know, even multiple directory signs, you know, at a lower height than than fifteen than fifteen feet and, you know, even twelve feet or ten feet would be better, but, you know, eight feet seems to kind of be the, you know, the standard that you'd like to see. Um, the next comment is about the signs in the right of way. The way that the amended code reads is, you know, it implies that signs are allowed in the right of in the in the public right of way as long as they don't obstruct anything. In the current code, it just says flat out that, you know, that signs aren't allowed in the right of way. So I guess I wonder why, you know, why there's a change to, um, you know, I guess to liberalize that rule and allow some signs in the in the right of way. I can't see what they'd be because, you know, the diagrams that you have show, you know, show the signs should be within the property, so I don't know what harm there would be in in retaining the language in the current in the current code, you know, which just says flat out that they're prohibited in the right of way, except for traffic signs. My third one is, um, you know, there's a section called posters and banners or something like that, billboards and banners, you know, things that, you know, people might wanna, you know, attach to a utility pole or or something like that. And they're just in the current code, there's a, you know, there is a prohibition that doesn't allow you to, um, you know, to put signs on trees or fences or shrubbery or something like that. That language has disappeared, and the only place where it says you can't um put um put things on trees, for instance, is is in the in that one section, what's the section, Melissa? Called um?
F and um.
Banners that are.
Prohibited signs.
Yeah, billboards and or.
Yeah, it's called um posters and handbills.
Yeah, yeah, so posters posters and handbills say that you can't put them on trees, but it would imply that other signs could be put on trees because there's no, you know, general language in the in the code prohibiting that. So so it seems like that requirement not to put things on trees, you know, is just for that limited, you know, circumstances of of the, you know, the the little poster board. So so I think that the current language in the code should be, you know, should be retained for that as well. And finally, um in terms of, you know, of signs, especially in a, you know, in a rural setting, they're used there in the current code, there's an allowance that you can you can put up signs that are, I think, are less than four square feet. That's disappeared from the, and then also that you could you could have more, you know, small no trespassing signs and things like that to post your property. You know, that language has disappeared in the amendment, and there is no provision for what I would call the minimalist signs, small signs. I don't even know how I'd be able to have a sign that shows what my, you know, my house number is at the bottom of my driveway on Daisy Drive. There's just no provision for doing that except for, you know, having one yard sign, which can be, you know, gigantic. So so I guess I question why the um the allowance for small signs was and the ability to post no trespassing signs and things like that was removed from um in the current code and doesn't appear, or it is in the current code, but doesn't appear in the amended code. So those are my four suggestions, and I hope that, excuse me, before you make a recommendation to the um to the Board of County Commissioners, that you'd be able to read my, you know, both documents and then be able to deliberate on, you know, what the contents are before you you make a decision to forward to the county commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, good.
Um, I, uh, well, I mean, there's a there's a couple of options here, I think that um the points that were brought up are all things that we could go through here and discuss here um in this in this moment. Um, I hate to table this again to another hearing, Dave, we've had a million of these meetings at this point.
How hard is it to add amend uh amend or add stuff down the line?
Well, right now, we can, we could go through a few of them, decide if we want to add or change any any of of those recommendations and create conditions to the conditions of approval.
Approval, yeah, okay.
So that then they can be made now, um but further down the road, it's just another code amendment that amends this part of code. It would be the same process again for another code amendment or maybe changes after this is approved. Um, so I would think it's something that we go through, my evening would be that we go through them now and iron them out and um and figure out if we want to add any of them as conditions to the current to the current um sign code, but.
I'd like to hear staff's response to that comment.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah, um, I certainly wasn't my intent to underrepresent um these comments. So um the fifteen feet, I I did bring up um as part of my presentation tonight and talk about that directory sign, it is the tallest sign. And so um that was something that was put out there, I I think for the reasons, you know, we've got multiple businesses, two or more, um could be twelve feet tall, probably could be twelve feet tall and still do its job. Like, you know, we've had signs in this community as tall as thirty-five feet, and we have plenty that are like twenty feet or more. So I think over time, as those get replaced with smaller ones, there might come a day where fifteen feet's gonna feel really large, I don't think it is today, um as we roll this out, so.
And maybe let's just talk about them one at a time, if that makes sense.
Okay, and what is the current code?
Thirty-five.
So reducing it from thirty-five to fifteen for directory.
Directory is the current is thirty-five. Is it? Yeah, all signs right now, in unless there's there's only one place that you reduce it and it's based on a highway condition. Okay.
That's a significant reaction.
It is, that's what I was gonna say.
I, yeah, and I think that my thought is that I I would rather there be one sign than two or four signs on a property.
And I'm trying to picture where we would see this kind of a directory sign, we would see it.
KW's shop building is a great one.
KW shop building would be one, uh rail yard coming into town once that commercial strip would be one, and would that?
It's city, too.
It's city, I understand, I'm just trying to visualize how that would work, but.
I think examples though of those.
Right, so that fifteen foot sign would be for each building, so if you had a building with four spaces and you had three buildings, you'd have three of these signs.
Buildings likely thirty-five feet tall.
Be per parcel, so if those if those not per building, it'd be per parcel. So if you have three businesses or or different things on a single lot, this would be per parcel or lot, not per business.
Okay, so so then the the commercial park at the airport eventually has one sign, multiple business, even though that would be multiple buildings.
If it's all one.
I'd really I'd really much rather see one sign than multiple signs at a slightly lower height.
Well, I think as soon as you start adding that you can add more signs, then we have more signs for everything, then we have to create that out out of that in that code.
So then the argument is this fifteen feet too high? Does it hurt the businesses if we limit it to twelve feet? And and that's not a suggestion, I'm only bringing that up. Thoughts?
Just to to add something here, it only takes one delivery truck or a Sprinter van parked in the wrong spot to make a twelve foot sign almost unreadable.
Well, in most of our signs, when we first started this, there was the uh concern that snow, four or five feet banked up at the bottom of a building, makes you want to have those slightly elevated, which was why we ended up with the monument sign size that we did. So fifteen feet with four feet actually gives you a, you know, it's a full intensive purpose as a twelve foot sign this time of year when you've got four feet on the ground and hasn't been viewed.
Right. Fifteen feet to me feels kind of short for a directory sign, I actually was like, oh, that's great, um just because I think about some of the ones that do exist right now and they're much taller than just ten feet.
I'd rather limit it to a single sign and have it be fifteen feet than lower it to eight and allow two.
I agree, I, can we ask the public?
Yes, yes, yeah, I just wanted to kind of get through any commissioners or anybody, any commissioners, um planning commission online that has any comments on it? Um, okay, and any and then, yeah, are there any uh public comment? Yeah, go.
I I understand what your reasoning is, I just wanted, my only intent. I just wanted, my only intent was to, you know, to call it to your, your attention since, you know, the, all, since all the other signs are eight feet or up to twelve feet. This one just seemed significantly higher than that. So it was really just to call it to your attention that's clearly up to you.
Absolutely.
But in terms of the change that's been suggested, the reduction from thirty-five to fifteen, that, that's a good thing.
Oh, oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And the reduction from thirty-five to eight is even better.
That's insane.
Yeah, okay.
All right, item two.
So we're...
Remind me.
I mean, I'm assuming we have...
We had right of way, um, was that limited or no signs?
Yeah, we, we address, we, we don't want private signs in public right of way. I mean, you can't do anything in public right of way.
I thought you already limited that any signs in right of way had to be public signs, had to be...
Well, let's say public in terms of...
Transportation signs.
Transportation signs. And we, we do address that a couple of places in the code. And, um, under our sixteen fourteen two is authority applicability in relationship to other regulations. So that's part of where we address, um, the sort of federal regulations, C dot regulations for signage, right? So they have their own, so, you know, if you're the state or actually local, state or federal, you know, you have access to public right of way. And if you don't, you don't have access to that. It's just like private property and that's in that way. And so that, that's why, um, we don't allow it. And I think that's pretty consistent. And we did move some of that language to the front of the regulations. So it, it didn't get stated several times throughout. So that would be my answer to that.
So it doesn't sound like you're opposed to the comment. I feel like it's addressed.
I did hear it, okay.
Go ahead.
I, I wish you had the opportunity to read my full, you know, my full comments. You know, it's kind of hard to just, you know, to summarize them. But what I saw was a change in the current code that says no signs in the right of way except for public signs, you know, to a change that says, um, no signs in the right of way if they obstruct, if they're, if they obstruct something. And so my, I was questioning, you know, why make a change at all? Why not leave the current, the current, um, code language?
But you do recognize that there is more language within here that kind of directs that into taking it kind of out of context and, you know, it's one.
It wasn't removed, it's just addressed in a different section.
Well, I think it's pretty, if you read the, the, um, you know, the prohibition in the current amendment, you know, it has a qualifier. It says no, no signs in the public right of way. Then last day obstructs something. It doesn't say no signs in the right of way.
Well, with obstructive signs or signs in the public right of way says any sign that obstructs free and clear vision of an intersectional traffic approaching the intersectional roadway. So I think that could be a sign that is not in the public right of way, but still obstructs, you know, vision. So I think that's, that's what it does say and I think that's what it, its intent is. And it's actually broader? Yeah. Than just right of way? Yeah, 'cause it, yeah, it's, it's like, you know, we have sight triangles. When you come up to an intersection, you need to be able to see clearly. And so I, I think that's what this is intended to do.
Yeah, well, and I thought, you know, I, I understand that, that, you know, many signs that aren't in the right of way that are obstruct, obstructive signs too and, and those shouldn't be allowed. I, I just noticed, I think that it reads that there's an except, there's no signs in the right of way except for signs that obstruct. I think that's, that's the way you could literally read that clause rather than just saying simply no signs in the right of way.
Well, then we could, we could have a, a legal review of that language, our draft language, before we finalize this. I have a condition of approval that basically says, you know, any legal refinements. Because I think our intent is clear. And if the language isn't clear enough, then we can strike.
Yeah, yeah, that's what you said in your presentation. I just don't think that it's, it's that clear.
But I will mention that we, we have had two, um, legal reviews of it thus far, but we can certainly do another.
So the, I mean, can I just read what the language says? Because I feel like, I, I guess I'm just confused as to why this isn't, isn't enough. So there's a section under yard signs that says something about public right of way, but the actual obstructive signs or signs in the public right of way, subject line, says any sign that obstructs free and clear vision of an intersection or traffic approaching the intersection or a roadway or any sign in, on, or above a public right of way that in any way interferes with normal or emergency use of that right of way without entering into a revocable encroachment license agreement with the county.
There's an awful lot of latitude there. It's obstructive or right of way. And that's magic in lawyer land. Obstructive signs and right of ways. It's, you're not losing everything you think you're losing.
Can I, do I just ask a question? So what would, you know, if I put a, so I could put a sign in the right of way that didn't obstruct vision and that would be okay?
No, no, you can't put a sign in the right of way, but you also can't put a sign that could obstruct the right of way. Two separate things, but that's how it reads. And you seem to be reading it the opposite of that.
Yeah, so any sign that, and I'm gonna like take out some things in the middle of this. Any sign that obstructs free and clear vision, and I'm not gonna go into the detail of that with the whole right of way, or any sign in, on, or above a public right of way.
So two categories, A and B, obstructive is A, B is right of way. The or makes it different.
And Pete, I'm new at this too, so I'll ask a question that might help both of us. Since the Colorado Department of Transportation regulates what's allowed signage wise in a right of way, we defer to that and there's language in our sign code that explains that. And that's why it's been omitted from our sign code because if the Colorado Department of Transportation already prohibits it, we don't need to go over it in our sign code? Is that why that part that he's seeing isn't, isn't...
Well, it's not that it's missing, it's just that it's reworded in this section. And we have plenty of roads within the county that have county right of way and not C dot right of way.
Oh, okay.
So it's not just that, C dot is mentioned in here also up further that talked about...
Sixteen four two, number C is relationship to other regulations. Nothing in this code shall be construed as exempting an applicant for sign commit, blah, blah, blah. Rules and regulations pertaining to Colorado Department of Highways. Uh, interim final amended tourist oriented directional sign rules and regulations through the Colorado Department of Highways. So we recognize that there is, you know, a higher level of authority that they have.
Yeah, go ahead.
One last thought, since you didn't have the opportunity to read my, my submittal, is I just suggested under, under prohibitions to simply say, and all this other language is, is fine and great and detailed, but just to say the prohibition, um, signs in the public right of way, period. All signs located in the public right of way except for public signs or otherwise stated herein. So it just is a prohibition against signs in the right of way. I think that's simple and doesn't interfere with any of the other language you have in the code.
Should we move on to the next one and just come back to that one?
Mm-hmm.
Good idea. Okay, the affixed signs, I, that, we have posters and handbills. And what it says is that's under F, under prohibited. Any sign to any structure, fence, tree, pole, or natural vegetation except designated community areas as otherwise permitted by the Land Development Code. So the idea was that I just, the posters on the, you know, all the places, I think that's, this is pretty much a holdover from the previous code and it seemed like it was worthy of being mentioned here. And Peter, um, does modify this. He likes the term affixed signs as opposed to posters and handbills. And I think your point was something related to what if people put other kinds of signs on poles or trees or, um, you know, other things. You know, we, we, we address all kinds of signs through here. And this is the one that typically we see in, on those kind of circumstances. So...
Well, and we have, so we have them, uh, as prohibited.
Yes.
As posters and handbills.
But I think the concern that was raised, the examples were no trespassing signs or your address sign. Those are not things in the interpretation and interpretation.
Yeah, I feel like if you change it to affixed, then you would be including those.
That's a different issue. That's a different...
Oh, I see.
...organization.
So, you're...
So I could just elaborate, the current code, you know, just has that same language, but it doesn't, it isn't preceded by, I keep forgetting my words, um...
Posters and handbills.
Posters and handbills. So, so the way it reads now is that only posters and handbills can't be attached to a tree.
No, it's a basically precedent, usually the captions don't count in the interpretation of the language. So it is any exterior sign affixed to any structure, fence, tree, or pole, we're not gonna modify it because the caption says posters and handbills.
The captions didn't appear in the previous code. It would be a lot, a lot simpler.
It is, captions are a shorthand, but it's a legal interpretation basic that when you say he as opposed to she these days, we're not gonna be like, that just applies to men. You know, it is. They're basics that are, here are things we're gonna roll with. Gender captions, uh, if one little part is invalid, we're gonna cut out that little part, not make the whole code invalid or the whole code section. These are legal interpretation things. So don't get stuck on posters and handbills, read the sentence.
Well, I did read the sentence, but I saw since it followed posters and handbills, that's all it applied to.
Yeah, but you're wrong.
So my, so my, okay, well, I'm not a lawyer. So my suggestion was changing posters and handbills to affixed signs and then having posters and handbills be a clause inside the, the sentence. But I'm not a lawyer, so it just seemed like it was, you know, somebody could say, well, I'm putting up a sign that's not a poster or a handbill, so it's okay.
But you can't, 'cause the language right after it says any exterior sign affixed. So you can't go, but, you know, contradict, anytime there is a perceived contradiction, the more specific language controls. That is just a legal interpretation thing.
Okay. My, my suggestion is just a simplification. So it applies, so it's clear that it applies to any, any sign that's affixed to a, you know, to a tree. I just think it makes it clearer.
All right. Well, our attorney advice is that it's, it's generally clear as it's written by law.
Next piece.
Next piece, I, uh, yard signs. Um, we do have a new section called yard signs. And the reason for that is it's a content neutral term, yard sign, and not real estate or political sign or whatever. So we have two categories for those now. And one of those is about, um, size, when they need to be removed. And it does, doesn't say political sign, but it says, you know, period prior to elections, right? So it's sort of acknowledging those kinds of signs. So that's where those are captured. And then the next one also is, it talks about real estate agent, property owner, property management's, um, signs. So again, the, the number and the size are addressed and those types of signs. So it seems that, um, that's where those kinds of signs landed, if I understood you correctly.
I guess my, my comment was that, um, you know, the yard signs are just, um, you know, for these two categories, for temporary signs. So what kind of sign, what, what do I, how do I put up a sign at the bottom of my driveway that has my...
Those are addressed.
That says twenty-seven Daisy Drive? And how do I, how do I put, how do I post my property with, with no trespassing signs? All, both of those options were part of the existing code.
So interestingly, and, well, first of all, I think the address is an address, it's not a sign. The no trespassing signs, I think, I don't even think belong here, but I think that's a good point for the one we were just talking about on affixed signs because that's where you see them, is affixed trees and poles and things like that. So what we've done is, I don't think they belong under yard signs. I think that if there's going to be a caveat, it belongs up above under the, uh, section we were just mentioning in that folks are allowed to do that. But, um, like, you know, I don't know how to create that, that...
Right.
Language.
Pretty valid.
And would say...
So I guess I would...
Letting have a word.
Um, in the administration of the code, um, do you think that your code official is going to take an objection to someone on a personal property putting up, you know, trespassing sign or something relative to their property? It's just something that...
Yeah, we, we can't cover every possible scenario in here, but...
I'm not sure that's kind of a logical thought that your land use department is going to send out code enforcement because someone has a no trespassing sign. It, it just doesn't seem like, I think we're trying to solve something that... Isn't really something that would be an, an everyday operation. That, I know myself right now as the code official, I would never open up a complaint because someone had those types of signs or an address. So I think we're trying, like, sometimes when we get too specific in a code or we're trying to solve everything, we're gonna have unintended consequences in there. Or we're just simply not gonna be able to, to actually even get a code that we're gonna be able to use. And so that one just seems like an overreach to me.
And I'm gonna butt in. If you go back to six, six point fourteen point two A, public signs include public notices. Is it no trespassing a public notice?
Mm-hmm.
So...
Okay.
Great.
I guess the last thing, I, I appreciate the discussion on this. I, I, I wish you could read my, my written comments, um, 'cause those are more, more expansive. But I guess the, the general principle is that there were things in the current code that have been eliminated or changed. So it's not like you're creating, you know, more detail. It's there, there was detail in the current code that's now being, you know, taken out in the amended code, so...
I guess I don't feel like we've been blind to that, you know? I think we've had a lot of these meetings where we've kind of gone through this, you know, and, and talked through what was working and, and whether or not this inclusively represents who we are today. So I don't, I don't feel like we've been naive to that that's how this process has gone, you know? And I think we know that there were pieces to the old, there were a lot of problems and things missing from the previous, previous code that we really wanted to make sure we were a priority to include in here. And I think if things were excluded from that, it was simply because we felt like they were either unnecessary, redundant, or not applicable anymore. So I don't think it's been a blatant over, you know, I really don't. I, you know, I feel like we've, we've really teased this through pretty, pretty well. And, and, and I guess I don't, I don't want, you know, anybody to feel like this was a very quick throw together situation where we just ignored the previous code and built a new one from scratch because I, I don't feel like that's what's happened.
I appreciate that and I, I certainly appreciate all your, all your hard work. And, and I think that, you know, in general, this, you know, the sign code is a, is a drastic improvement that will serve, serve the county for, you know, for years to come and will, you know, keep some of the really bad stuff, really bad stuff out. So, so I appreciate all of that. I just wanted to call attention to some items that when I read the... I'm a retired regulatory specialist, so maybe I read regulations a little bit differently. You know, I read them really literally. And these were things that jumped out on me that I just wanted to offer for consideration. And I hope that my two documents will become part of the, the record.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for your close reading.
Yeah, thanks, Pete.
Any discussion, questions, comments?
It was a good discussion, though, but...
Um, okay, I will entertain a mo, a motion to close this public hearing.
Edmonds moves to close the public hearing. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I think at this point, commissioners, go eat some dinner.
Thanks, guys.
How much time do we have for that?
Um, we aren't bringing you back. Um, we aren't bringing you back, we did that all on purpose, so that now you can enjoy.
Out of here.
Free.
Yeah. Yeah, so the public hearing process is over, so now the two will go to you guys next.
Next Tuesday.
Tuesday for decision review, our recommendation, make your decision.
Awesome.
Their seat open, they're right, they're used to it.
Yeah.
Seeing.
Yes.
See, George.
All the motions.
Just.
See, I like.
Yes, you would.
Yes. Here's mine.
Yep, no, we need to go.
Here's the motion.
We need to go.
There. I have them all printed out, if you want.
Which one do you, we're going over to Abby soon.
Oh, you just need to start with one.
Well, I like the first one, because it's the shores. But we might alternate, it's either, whatever you come to.
This one is a scene conservation, if you want that.
Okay.
So there's the motion for that, and that one is the rezone.
Okay, the first one to get back to is the Timber Ranch Rezone File twenty-five dash zero-two. Open to a motion to then start discussion.
Emotion, let a motion start discussion.
No, the emotion, that will start the discussion, sorry.
Edward's move the planning commission recommend approval of file number twenty-five dash zero-two, Timber Ranch filing number one, the re-subdivision of tract B of the Timber Ranch subdivision, P U D rezoning of the Lake County Board of County Commissioners with following conditions. Number one, CPD should work with developer applicant to correct any minor edits to the zoning control document prior to recordation with the final plat. Number two, all representations made in the application and in hearing shall be considered conditions of approval. In further finding pursuant to LDC section three point one, three point three approval criteria, the proposed rezoning is consistent with the Lake County Comprehensive Plan.
Great, can I get a second?
A second.
Great, any discussion on this file, any conversation, discussion on this motion?
Our lot sizes are thirty-five feet wide, and our park lot sizes are twenty-five feet wide. If I read this correctly.
We may have a clerical.
I, I can speak to that, oh, I'm not allowed to, sorry.
You're allowed to speak to staff if you'd like.
You can talk to, to me and tell me why that minimum lot, lot width as the minimum is twenty-five for the park.
So the, the reason for that is we've got some, some twenty-five foot breaks in the subdivision to kind of break up the density a little bit, so that was sort of the, the genesis of it.
So where it is not, so those twenty-five foot lots, truly, you're not building lots, those are green space lots.
Those are private space.
That's how I understood it, I just wanted to be certain, thank you.
Thank you.
From the thirty-five foot minimum, I believe our, our, our smallest duplex lots are seventy-eight feet wide, but those, those will actually come out closer to thirty-nine feet, we just added a slightly lower minimum just in case if we have a lot where we have to shift things around because of, you know, things that are going on, on that specific lot, just to give ourselves some breathing room.
Thank you.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion? All right, I'll do a roll call for, yea or nay, Joey Edwards.
Yea.
Uh, Dave Clark Farrell.
Yea.
Uh, Ryan Hill. David Yurk.
Yea.
Heather Lind.
Yay.
Uh, moves us into file twenty-five dash zero-three, which is the Garvey Scenic Conservation Overlay Site Plan Review for the solar panels.
I move that the Lake County Planning Commission approve file twenty-five dash zero-three, Garvey Scenic Conservation Overlay Site Plan Review for the installation of an accessory solar energy system located at fifteen seventy-eight County Road fifty-five, Leadville, Colorado. Finding that one, the proposed site plan is in substantial conformance with the expressed purposes, intents, goals, and policies of the Lake County Comprehensive Plan, and any ancillary county acknowledge or adopt the documents pertaining to natural resources protection, affordable housing, infrastructure management, and any area-specific community plans. Two, the proposed site plan conforms to the requirements and provisions of this code. Three, the proposed site plan adequately addresses the submittal requirement items. Four, the proposed site plan is consistent with and in harmony with neighboring land uses and future intended land uses in the area. Five, the proposed site plan is substantially in compliance with the requirements and provisions of section six point one five design criteria. And further find that the standards within sections five point two point twenty and four point three point three parentheses C, close parentheses, have been adequately met.
Do I have a second?
Edward's seconds.
Uh, any discussion on this motion?
There was a suggestion made that the concrete pylons be painted a camouflage in color. Is there any concern with that? I don't know that you'd actually be able to see those pylons from the road.
I don't think you would, I think it's.
Thousand feet away, and you're looking uphill, and the hill is behind them.
You're just going to see this little bit of the house.
No, wait.
That's my thought.
Yeah, same here.
He's got to have good eyesight to see that, especially under the car.
Yeah, yeah. Um, okay, great, Joey Edwards.
Yea.
Dave Clark Farrell.
Yea.
Ryan Hill. David Yurk.
Mm.
Heather Lind. All right, sign code amendment file twenty-four dash thirty-nine. I think we ended up there.
Did we come up with anything that we specifically want to spell out?
No, I think, but I think we're under the casual approval.
Yes. Would you like to make a motion? Edward's move the planning commission recommend approval of file number twenty-four dash thirty-nine, code amendment to chapter six, section six point one four to the Board of County Commissioners with the following conditions, and the resolution be prepared to memorialize the decision. Number one, any minor modifications to the draft regulations such as final graphics to illustrate the sign standards, and to make the following findings, A, that is conditioned the proposed amendment is consistent with the goals, objectives, policies, and other provisions of the Lake County Comprehensive Plan and this code, B, that is conditioned the proposed amendment is necessary because of changing social values, new planning concepts, or other social or economic conditions, and C, that is conditioned the proposal is within the best interest of the health, safety, and general welfare of the general public.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion on this one?
I think we clarified those points and made some valid points. The things that are left open seem to be left open with a very specific purpose. I trust that should someone want to put in five hundred no trespassing signs, that would come up as.
Something different, yeah. Yeah, again, I just really liked it how, how all this has all come together, so thanks again to staff for coming out to the line. Any other discussion?
Anybody just asked the question, did anybody online or anybody in the room have any problem with the fifteen foot pylons, with the fifteen.
Not anybody in the room, this is only planning commission members, but yes.
I'm, I'm sorry, I meant, I'm sorry, I meant planning commission members online.
Yeah.
Anybody had any concerns with that?
No.
No. Okay. Joey Edwards.
Yea.
Dave Clark Farrell.
Yea.
Ryan Hill.
Yea.
David Yurk.
Yea.
Heather Lind, yay. Yay. All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, you can make that one. No, you have to make it, you have to make it, I can't make it, you have to.
Motion, would you?
Yes, there you go, now I need a second.
Edward's seconds.
All in favor?
All right.
Bye.
Melissa, thank you again.